All right, then I will call to order the October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty city council meeting at seven thirty-one. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, your republic, for which it stands, one nation, undergone indivisible, without liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Alder Radifrada?
Yeah.
Alder Clouter?
Here.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Crowsey?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Schroeder?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, great. First is public appearances, and then the items and new appointments. And there was someone who had registered. They are not online. But it's just the one person, and if they come in later, I'm okay with them speaking later unless anyone has an objection to that. But if they pop on later, we'll get them on that. I think it's something that actually isn't a future agenda item, so they might just decide to wait. All right, so moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve? Second.
All right, Sarah and Gabriella. Anything that anyone wants to remove on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, then that is approved. Then we go to administrative report. Pat?
All right, please bear with me. My, I've, I've lost my voice here a little bit due to a sore throat, so. Um, at the last meeting I reported, there was, um, one hundred and sixty-three new single-family, uh, home permits. I wanted to just break those down for you. There's one hundred and forty-two single-family homes new this year and twenty-one duplexes, so, uh, that's all great. That is a record, by the way, for Pittsburgh, so. All these new subdivisions going up, I think we're gonna see that continue into next year and beyond. Um, a few other points. Uh, staff is still working remote. Um, I'm happy to say, uh, they are, they've been healthy and productive and getting the, getting their work done, so that's, that's good. I would like to give kudos to our clerks department. They've been very busy with the election. There's a lot of people, um, coming into City Hall, into the community center area, um, and they've done a great job. I've received a lot of positive comments from the public, uh, in person as well as via email, so. Thank you to Tracy and her team. And then, uh, finally, uh, road construction is gonna finalize, uh, the end of November, the week of Thanksgiving. Uh, will be completely done with McKee PD, um, so that thing will all be open and cleared up and they won't have to deal with that road work again for maybe twenty, twenty-five years. And then, um, Fish Hatchery Road, Phase One, will be mostly complete. There's some aesthetics and some lighting that need to, uh, take place in the spring. But in terms of, uh, being traversable, the road will be, uh, totally done, uh, by Thanksgiving. That's Phase One. Phase Two kicks in as soon as the weather permits in the spring. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's any questions.
All right, any questions for Pat? Seeing none, we will keep moving on. Uh, Plan Commission, Tom?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. The first one is resolution, it's CS. I move approval, it's CS twenty-three sixty-seven dash twenty, resolution approving certified survey map request. CS twenty-three sixty-seven twenty by Sean Kearns, agent for Radford Kearns to divide property associated with twenty-one eighty-two County Truck Highway MM into two lots.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, sent by Randy, and I know that Plan Commission approved it. Uh, do you want to speak to it, Tom?
Just briefly, um, we had, um, two lots here in the individual. Um, it's an area that had to be cleaned up. There was just a lot of debris around and things, and he's done that, he's cleaned it up, and it's, uh, to put one lot into two with the five conditions.
Yep, and I know it's, uh, down MM a little bit by Highway D where that, um, kinda goes east, if you will. I believe that's Badger Systems, maybe it's down there. I think there's like a big LP tank. And so it's all existing buildings, just dividing that into a couple lots instead of one with a lot of, there's a bunch of buildings down there. Any questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is approved. And before we move on, it looks like we do have John here, uh, online now. Welcome, John. Uh, so we'll just skip back quick to non-agenda items, and just a reminder that you've got three minutes. But, uh, whenever you are ready, you can go ahead.
Sounds good, thanks. Yeah, sorry, I struggled to get in with my laptop, so I'm using my phone, which is kinda painful, but it'll back to work. Um, so I'm, I'm, uh, John Baum, I'm the Juvenile Court Administrator for Dane County, so I oversee, um, juvenile reception center, juvenile detention, and some of the programs for the county. And over the last couple of years, I worked really closely with council member, um, Joe Maldonado when he was at United Way to really try to figure out a way to address our more chronic offenders, the ones stealing cars in Pittsburgh, stealing cars in Madison, breaking into homes, and all those other things repeatedly. And through that process, um, we formed a coalition that, um, really began to focus on that population of, of, of youth. Through that, we held a number of listening sessions, especially with our kids in detention. And Joe was a part of, uh, a number of those, and almost universally, we would hear a common, common themes from the kids when we'd ask, um, you know, what, what could have prevented you from sort of heading down this path, and what could help others in the future? What could even help you? Um, and almost always, you know, their comments were, we really could have used and could use adults in our lives. So we, through this coalition, formed, um, a mentoring pilot, and that is now off the ground, and hopefully is gonna, gonna really be helpful for these kids. Second and third, almost universally, that the kids would speak to were the need for activities. They would like to do things that are age-appropriate for, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, um, that are fun, that sort of keep them all off the streets. And, you know, they're really honest about that. And right along with that was employment. They're really, you know, interested in, in working somehow to make money and, and to stay busy. So I'm here tonight just to speak, and I don't know all the details of Amendment fifteen and sixteen that, that Joe is putting forward, that, uh, uh, council of the whole, I believe, is dealing with tomorrow night, but, um, I certainly would encourage the, the council to consider, um, some kind of a teen center. Um, we have a fair number of youth in our system that are from Pittsburgh, and, and, um, you know, having a concentrated activity center would only help, um, provide other alternatives for them. The study I'm not as familiar with, but, you know, really analyzing anything about this population of, of youth, um, is, is super important. Um, and, and as someone who works for the county in a department head position, I'm certainly willing to partner with and help and do whatever's necessary with the council or with anyone in Pittsburgh to, um, to try to improve the situation. So that's what I'm advocating for. Um, thanks for listening to me.
All right, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thanks, too.
All right, um, back to Plan Commission. Next one up, Tom?
Uh, the second, the second one is resolution R, um, twenty-three sixty-eight dash twenty, resolution approving final plot request. Uh, twenty-three sixty-eight twenty by Tom Goff, agent for Goff Construction and Real Estate Incorporated for the final plot for Livia Place. This is associated with lot fifty-nine through sixty-three at Terravesta. Uh, move approval.
Second.
All right, second. And Plan Commission approved this one. Tom, do you want to speak to this?
This one is interesting, that we had all the planners there on Tuesday night, and, um, there are sixteen conditions. This individual's adding three lots, um, to Terravesta in a certain area, and he was asked by the planners to, what are the price on some of these homes, and to our not surprise, I'm gonna say satisfaction, was at least they were around three hundred thousand, three hundred fifteen thousand, he quoted them at. So that, I thought, was encouraging as far as a new house in the city of Pittsburgh. There were sixteen conditions that went along with it, but, um, it was pretty positive, I thought.
Yeah, I think they were all fairly standard conditions, nothing out of the ordinary, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I know that there is, are still owner-occupied, just change, make the lots a little bit smaller to get eight instead of five. They're detached. I know we had some like zero lot line stuff, but these are detached with a garage and stuff out the back. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. One more, Tom?
The last one for the Plan Commissioners Resolution, it's twenty-three sixty-nine twenty, resolution approving final plot request. Uh, twenty-three sixty-nine twenty by Chad Woobin, agent for Pittsburgh Land LLC for final plat for, uh, Braxton Place Number Two. These are lots eighty-four through ninety-one at Terravesta. And this was, I believe, eight new lots?
Well, first, first, just do your motion.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Randy. Okay, and Plan Commission approved. Go ahead, Tom.
I believe there were approximately eight more units, and, um, he had nine conditions.
Yeah, there was eight planned, there's still eight units, uh, just changing the, the size of the lots just a little bit. And these are zero lot lines, so this one, it's more of a, every, oh, it's like, it's kinda like it's one building, um, but it's condos. It's getting its homeowner occupied, uh, but these are essentially attached, if you will, zero lot line, unlike the one that we just approved. But more owner-occupied options.
We, and we did ask, or continue to ask these builders, um, I think a couple of us, at least from the Plan Commission, are gonna ask the builders, um, what are the price of these homes? So the public watching, and those are maybe even living in apartments, at least when I'm around, I'm gonna keep asking them. Um, what are the price of these homes? And these were around three hundred, I believe?
Roughly, yeah.
I mean, obviously, if you're gonna add things to them, it may go up a little, but, uh, we wanna know what the price of some of these homes are. And, um, so we found, I found that interesting, that's all I got.
All right, any questions on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. On to Public Works, Sarah.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R one eighty-four twenty, releasing and accepting a public water main and sanitary sewer easement on, uh, on Outlet eleven in Crescent Crossing.
Sent by Julia. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And Plan Commission approved as well. Do you want to speak to this one, Sarah?
Sure, so this one, within the Crescent Crossing subdivision, an easement was planned for the sewer water utilities, but due to current water, um, the current plan, they had to be shifted slightly. Uh, they were originally planned to co-locate, but Pittsburgh does not allow utilities to co-mingle, so the easement's being dedicated at no cost to the city and, and just being part of the project. And please speak up if I'm missing anything, Pat or Aaron, sorry.
Sounds good, just changing the easement a little bit.
Bill's, I have Bill's notes here, and it's perfect, thank you.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, oh, all right, go ahead, Julia.
All right, um, who is paying for all of these, um, extra costs? The developer?
There's no, yeah.
Okay.
Pat, there's not really an extra cost of those, it's, it's just changing where the easement is.
That's correct. The, the utilities were going in anyway, it just, we just had to, they would pay for the paperwork and
Okay.
The legal work for the easement, that's it.
All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that one's approved. Next up?
Make a motion to approve Resolution R one eighty-five twenty, releasing a public water main and sanitary sewer easement and accepting a public pedestrian bike path and street purpose easement on Outlet six in Terravessa.
Second.
Seconding, and did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And then Plan Commission also approved. All right, what's this one about, Sarah?
So this was from Bill, kind of cleaning up plaits, and this was initially proposed a sanitary sewer along the east side of County Highway MM adjacent to Terravessa, um, but when they discussed the, how the sewer lines would connect, they discovered that most septic systems were in the backyards. So this was a change just to make it more effective. Um, the easement, once again, is already dedicated as part of a previous CSM, so the city will not incur any additional costs.
All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, cleaning some stuff up. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that one's approved. Next one, Sarah?
Make a motion to approve Resolution R one eighty-six twenty, accepting public sidewalk easement, easements on Lot one and Outlets two and three and CSM one five zero zero three.
Second.
All right, sent by Randy. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And then Plan Commission also approved. So what's this one about?
Uh, this is along Versica, um, east of Mizuna Drive in the Terravessa development. The sidewalks were installed one foot further back of the curb than they were initially designed due to the tapering of the lots. Um, they were, uh, installed, there's no additional cost to the city as it was dedicated as part of the plaque closeout, and, um, they are going to remain private property, but they have, nothing will be different, basically, where it will still be the, um, owner's responsibility to clear them and things like that. It really is just the, um, actual assignment of the, the easement itself.
All right, questions at all on this one? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one is approved. One more.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R one eighty-seven twenty, granting sanitary sewer easements to Madison Metropolitan Sewer District, uh, City of Madison, CircCo, and Thermo Electric Scientific Instruments within the Military Ridge and Cannonball Trail corridors.
I'll second that.
All right, sent by Dorothy. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And I know that Plan Commission approved. What's this one about?
This is replacing the sewer interceptor within the Cannonball Trail. Um, the MMSD does not currently have an easement within that area, so this is also a nice plaque cleanup that Bill's working on, uh, to show the easement for the sewer interceptor. It is being enlarged for capacity. Uh, Bill had mentioned about twenty-seven feet deep, and it will cause disruption on the Cannonball Trail. They're hoping to start late November, early December, and the trail will be kind of out of commission for a while while it is worked on.
Do you know when they're gonna try and finish that? I don't remember.
I don't, sorry, it just said, I, my note said for a while, so I'm unsure, sorry.
All right. Sounds good. Other questions? What's that, Pat?
I'll get that information out to everyone tomorrow.
Thank you, Pat, sorry.
No problem.
Any other questions? Julia?
Yeah, I have a question. I am confused. So we are replace, we are doing a replacement of the sewer connector in the same place?
Yeah, my understanding was that it was definitely being enlarged for capacity, and that it really is something that kind of needs to be done for functionality.
Oh, we are in, we are ma, okay, we are enlarging, okay, okay.
And Sarah, if I remember right, MMSD is doing this, there's, the cost isn't doing the, it, the city's not doing this, there's no, well, technically no cost to the city. Our residents ultimately pay for it, but, okay.
Correct, yes, the project is driven by MMSD.
All right, other questions? All right, seeing none, then all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. Anything else, Sarah, that you want to talk about?
Um, our next meeting is November second, that's it.
All right, moving along to Park Commission. It's you again, Sarah.
Yep, um, we met on October first, our next meeting is November fifth. Uh, the only kind of topics to bring back from the October first meeting is we did talk about the Stoner Prairie Park Plan Proposal, and that Scott will work with a task force of neighbors, uh, to put kind of a review of the park plan and really have that resident insight. And then, at the upcoming November fifth meeting, we are planning the ground that is proposed for McKee that has been presented here previously, um, but that's the only thing I know that's on the agenda so far, and once again will be done November fifth. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. How about, uh, Library Board, Randy?
Uh, yes. Yes, uh, Library Board met last Wednesday, October twenty-first. Um, just a couple notes for update. Uh, the library handed out two hundred and seventy-five take-and-make craft kits for the kids last weekend in lieu of the Halloween hunt. Uh, curbside services will be closed on Wednesday, November fourth, for staff in service, uh, which of course will be socially distanced and met with masks. And, uh, third, the, uh, the new target date for opening the library for express services is, uh, scheduled for January twenty-fifth. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commission on Aging Well, Dorothy?
Thank you, um, as has, continues to be the case, there's a lot of things that happen via the senior center, if not at the senior center. A few things that are on their schedule right now is a vets-only meal drive-by that's going to be held on, uh, eleven twelve. Uh, people need to call the senior center by noon on eleven nine, uh, to participate in that. Um, it's a catered meal that, it's a drive-by pickup meal, and again, it's vets-only. Um, the Aging Mastery Program there, uh, is still happening in the future. They're looking for people interested in that, and they're wanting to be sure that people are aware of Medicare Open Enrollment happening now. And, uh, next meeting is scheduled for eleven twelve.
All right, thank you. Uh, RCC, Gabriella?
We are meeting next on November ninth.
All right, how about Transportation and Transit?
We are still working on scheduling a meeting for November or December.
All right, and then Seda, Julia? Oh, you're on mute, Julia.
So we didn't, uh, meet, uh, but, um, we, uh, this month, we are meeting in December ten. We are combining two months' meeting, but we have an update, so I want to share some, uh, information that regarding the business boost grant, two more loans were approved, um, for ten thousand dollar each. And then the next application's submitted deadline is November fifteen, and the fifteen of each month, and December fifteen is the, the last deadline. Um, also, uh, there was a lodging grant program that we, uh, distributed this information to our hotel in the city. Governor Tony Evers had designated twenty millions from the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Care Act to a city hotel, motel, and bed and breakfast operator whose facility has been, uh, very severely affected by the COVID-nineteen. So that one is good news because our hotel in the city can, um, can apply to the grant. Um, so some development project update, we have the TerraPoint Mixed Use Building thirty-one oh one in Fish Hatchery Road. Uh, if you have been, uh, going through Fish Hatchery, you're gonna see that they are installing the windows in the building. Uh, also the part bank branch, uh, steel is going up, and you can see the frame is coming up in the corner. Uh, Quarry Ridge Senior Housing behind the Super Target, uh, the steel is going up, and also you have received an invitation for a ribbon cutting this coming Thursday at twelve o'clock, so I assume that all of you receive that invite for the, um, for the groundbreaking. And then the other news is that Phoenix is moving to, into Pittsburgh headquarters in November. So regarding some prospect, um, you know, as you know, Little John, um, is being located in the former A-one furniture building on Verona Road. And then there are, um, there are multiple, uh, senior housing, um, uh, living and care looking for site in Pittsburgh. There are several of them, they're looking for different sites. Um, the development team, uh, have assisted two small biotech company with a space search, they're looking, um, Pittsburgh. Um, so there are also conversation with two development entity who might be interested in leading redevelopment in the two thousand eight hundred block on Fish Hatchery Road. And the other one is Quick Trip, it's planning a neighborhood meeting for a proposer, for a proposed store at the southeast corner of East Herald and Sayre Row, so for district, I think it is district four, that one. Um, so other project, um, the T-grant application, um, pending for less than road reconstruction, they're working on that. And I don't know if that's already public information that, I don't, but I don't know. But, um, so, so far, uh, you know, the city has, you know, uh, even though we COVID, we have a lot of interest for searches and, and sites in our area, so, so far that.
All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Uh, Ag and Rural Affairs met last, uh, Tuesday, October twentieth. Uh, good portion of the meeting was, uh, was discussion regarding potential modification of language, language in the agricultural zoning gr, uh, districts, and then we also touched upon broadband, uh, extending broadband into the rural portion of the city, which it so desperately needs. Um, those are just very preliminary conversations that Roger Colhee and myself are kind of leading that charge. Uh, the next meeting will be Tuesday, November seventeenth.
All right, thank you. Uh, going on to EMS, Shannon?
Um, we just, uh, the last meeting, we went over, um, budget. Um, other than that, uh, most of the alders were there. Um, the next meeting will be November nineteenth, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Um, next meeting is December first. Um, oh, and I forgot to mention this, at our last meeting, the, um, chair, um, connected with city staff and, um, got approved the ability to add two more, um, meetings per year, um, to the schedule. So instead of four, there will be six.
All right, great. Uh, Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet next on December eighth.
All right, good. Landmarks Preservation?
Nothing to report.
All right, how about the Census Complete Count Committee?
First, I want to say that, um, they made a liar of me last time I said, um, that there had been a decision made to extend the count through the end of October, and then all of a sudden, they announced, or the government announced that it was being cut off as of October fifteen. Um, so hopefully, they were able to get the last numbers counted that they would have been working on the, these last two weeks. Um, they're saying that they've got ninety-nine point ninety-eight percent of the US addresses, um, that have been counted. But twenty-four point one percent of those were by proxy, which means, um, they were counted by virtue of asking a landlord or a neighbor, or the mailman, or someone who might have a sense of who lives there. Which really concerns me particularly for smaller children and getting all the kids counted for, um, school funding. So hopefully, that works out well. Um, in total, they'd hired almost six hundred thousand people to work on the census. Um, so that, that's, it was a huge effort. They had the pandemic to deal with, they had hurricanes, and they had wildfires to deal with. So that that's, it was a huge effort, they had the pandemic to deal with, they had hurricanes and they had wildfires to deal with. So they had lots and lots of obstacles. All in all, they did as well this year as they did ten years ago, they feel. So hopefully, numbers come out reasonably decently. And sometime after the end of the year, they should have final numbers available to us to start looking at redistricting questions.
All right, excellent. How about Housing Advisory?
That is no report, and no report for Healthy Neighborhoods also.
All right, then moving right along to Finance Committee, Julia?
Okay, so before I move through the bills, I want to, tomorrow, Committee of the Hall, we are gonna review all the amendments to the to the budget. So I want to thank all the Alders that submitted amendments to the budget. We have a round twenty-nine, so tomorrow's your opportunity to discuss those amendments. You have question, all those question tomorrow, because remember, for November ten, it's gonna be Budget Night, and the protocol is stricter on how we can, you know, ask question, you know, there are, I I think tomorrow, we are gonna go through that process, we missed it, she's gonna explain that. But please be prepared for tomorrow, so read the package. You know, so there are only twenty-nine. So so we are ready to discuss all of this tomorrow, and then by Budget Night, everyone can prepare to determine which amendment you're gonna approve or you're gonna vote it out, so. So the Finance Committee meeting approved all the detailed review of all check issue, check number one-two-one-two-seven-six dash one-two-one-three-three-eight, dated October fifth, October first to October fifteen, twenty twenty, totaling three hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, four hundred six dollars with eight cents. And then we review all the PICA transaction for the cycle ending September seventh, twenty twenty, with a total of two hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-six, eighty, eighty-five dollars with seventy-six cents. That's it, and then we have other, we 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 went through another resolution that is coming in the the package.
All right.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Dorothy?
That'd be another no report.
All right, anything on Public Safety and Human Services, Sarah? All right, all right, well, then we'll go right to Mayor's Report. And just one thing I'm gonna talk about tonight, and I've mentioned it, I don't know, a couple of meetings ago, maybe. Last year, I started what I'm calling the Mayoral Awards. It's an opportunity to recognize people who have really contributed a lot to Fitchburg, and just kind of a chance to recognize those people. And also to get the community together, unfortunately, because of COVID, we can't get the community together this year and celebrate these people. But hopefully, next year, we can do that again, hopefully, it's something that continues. And so there's kind of three categories, and we'll be releasing a press release and some interviews I did with all the winners this week. But I can announce the winners right now, and for the citizen that I recognize this year is Francis Huntley Cooper, who is a former mayor, the first African-American mayor in Wisconsin, and sadly, still the only person who's been elected mayor in Wisconsin that is African-American. And also heavily involved in a number of other things. In the business category, KAL Engineering, owned by Kim Lobdell, who not only has her business here, but she lives here in Fitchburg, and has been in business for twenty-nine years. And then in the for staff, I recognize our Planning and Zoning Committee for all the many things they've done this year, helping with development, but also updating our comp plan, which was a pretty aggressive timeline, for the work they do with Healthy Neighborhoods, for the work even, you know, Phil is doing and that team is doing with Solar Farm as well. A lot of unique transformative projects that they've been working on as well. But, you know, frankly, I could have given every department an award, I do want, you know, again, thank every department in the city for all the work that they've done, you know, throughout this year and beyond. But, you know, the work, everything they've done in the middle of pandemic to keep the city running smoothly for our residents has been phenomenal. They're really bending over backwards, and I can go through every department and talk about the great things they've been doing this year. So it's kind of an impossible thing to, you know, recognize one area, I admit. But I do think that's important, but I do want to thank all the departments, because, you know, every single one could, has done some great things this year. So that, we'll be releasing some interviews I did with all those award winners this week yet, and thank you Fact TV for the work you're doing with all that. And so look for that, and then next year, hopefully, we'll be able to celebrate those people and a brand-new group of winners. So we can go to Alder Reports, I think I started with District Four last time, so how about District Three this time? Sarah, do you have anything?
I only have two things, the first is just, there was a traffic alert that Post Road will be closed tomorrow, six thirty a.m. to six p.m., just as part of the Fish Hatch Road construction. And then as a reminder, this is the last week for the Fitchburg Farmers Market. It is October, October twenty-ninth, this Thursday, three to six at the Agora Pavilion. Because of COVID, they don't have an indoor market planned, so it's a good opportunity to get some local goods. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Shannon.
Nothing to report.
All right, how about District Four, Tom?
Thank you, I just have one thing, it has to do with, it was also called North Stoner Prairie, or the Crescent Crossing off of Seminole Highway. I don't know if you've been on the way lately, but you can see it's starting to develop. I was gone by a couple of times, I was pretty impressed with the landscaping. Believe it or not, if you go by there, you'll see a number of trees that have been planted, and the greenway. And there is one house that I saw that is going up. So I know for our new Alders, they weren't aware of it, but North Stoner Prairie, that was at high density, and it was changed to medium density. That's the Crescent Crossing, and I think it's gonna be a good asset to the city.
All right, Randy?
Just one thing, just a reminder that absentee in-person voting is taking place. And tomorrow and Thursday, it's from eight a.m. to seven p.m., and then, of course, on Friday, the last day for in-person absentee voting, and that's from eight a.m. to five p.m. And just a personal note, from my own experience, I should comment that City Clerk Tracy Holdenberg has done a fabulous job of of maintaining distance, you know, the entire process, it was very smooth. Distance was was honored, and just kudos to her, thank you.
I agree, and I'm sure she'll update us on what's been happening on our next agenda item here. All right, District One, Dorothy?
I was gonna mention, I got an email, I don't know who else got it. It wasn't, there there was no two in the subject line, so. But there's going to be McKee and Seminole Highway closures for asphalt pavings this weekend coming up. And it's going to be significant for anyone that uses that intersection. Friday, the thirtieth, from nine a.m. to four p.m., westbound McKee Road will be closed from Commerce Park Drive to Playcon driveway. There will be a marked detour for that. Saturday, the thirty-first, from six a.m. to eight p.m., the McKee-Seminole intersection will be closed. Seminole closed from Executive Drive to Croy Drive. McKee closed from Seminole Highway to Woods Edge Way. And again, there will be marked detours for that. Monday, November second, from nine a.m. to eight p.m., eastbound McKee Road will be closed from Commerce Park Drive to Seminole Highway. And again, there will be a marked detour.
All right, thank you. Joe?
All right, got a few of them. On October twenty-ninth, which is Thursday, there will be a Facebook Live meeting greet for the new school board member in Verona, Yana Williams. She was appointed to take the place of Deborah Von Biddle. That will be on Facebook Live, and I can put the link on my Alder page. And there is a new bike station in the neighborhood. It's actually at Luna's, so it's a little bit across the border in Madison. But if you are a cyclist and you need to put air in your tires, or fix something that's awry, please feel free to stop by. Shout out to former Mayor Steve Arnold for actually setting it up himself, along with some other volunteers. There have been, there was a string of burglaries about a week ago in the Dunn's Marsh neighborhood on Genuin Road. I have been in contact with Fitchburg PD, they're investigating, and, you know, trying to figure out who, you know, was at the root of it. I have also been in contact with neighbors. So, you know, folks, just make sure you're locking your doors and locking your cars at night. There was a successful caravan through the southwest side of Madison, ending in Allied Park and going through the Dunn's Marsh and Belmar neighborhood, I think there were maybe ten or fifteen caravans. And thank you to the folks who led that caravan, as well as the people who stuck around in the park to register any voters or give out voting information for folks who needed it. Thank you, I just want to echo all the Udel's. Thanks to the Clerk's Office, there was a early voting in the park two weekends ago in Jamestown Eagle Park. Thank you to the election inspectors who were, you know, present in that cold weather for, you know, taking in folks, and I'm sure Tracy can tell you how many ballots were dropped off. I wanna just emphasize to the public to please take your precautions, socially distance, wear your masks, don't go unnecessary places that you don't need to go, because Wisconsin is the the hotspot for COVID lately. And, you know, the number of hospitalizations and deaths throughout the state, and even here in Dane County, has has been very scary. So please be safe. And then finally, there is an event on the thirty-first, I know it's not in my district, but the Progress Center for Black Women is holding a pumpkin and pie sale. It's going to be October thirty-first, from ten a.m. to two p.m., again, on fifty-nine thirty-six Seminole Center Court. And you can register through the Center for Black Women website. And finally, Voces de la Frontera is going to be doing a voter caravan in the Jamestown neighborhood in the morning of October thirty-first. More details to come, and again, I'll post those details on my Alder page when they are available.
All right, thank you. Gabriela?
So a couple of things, first, for Halloween, this this Sunday, no, Saturday, sorry, Saturday, October thirty-first. The Rolling Pin Bake Shop is actually gonna have a costume, oh, you if you come in with a costume between seven-thirty and three, you'll get a free cupcake. So go ahead and stop by Rolling Pin. And then I want to encourage everyone to make a plan to vote, I know many have already voted, I'm really looking forward to Tracy's update about how many people voted. But if you have an absentee ballot, make a plan to drop it off, and I do recommend at this point that you drop it off at City Hall, instead of putting it in the mail. And then if you are planning to vote in person either early or on the day, make a plan. Decide when you're gonna go, figure out how you're gonna get there, and think through it, because that really helps. And myvote.wa.gov is actually a really fantastic website that the state that the state provides for us, and you can find out whether or not your absentee ballot has been received, you can find out where your polling place is, there's so much information on there, it's very easy to use. So I encourage you to check it out, and also double-check your ballot status if you've already turned it in. And then the last thing is November tenth. Well, also, I'm looking forward to the Committee of the Hall meeting tomorrow night, which is October twenty-eighth at six p.m., where we'll discuss the budget amendments. But for the public, the public hearing about the budget before the vote on amendments, and then the final adoption of the budget, is on November tenth, which is the next council meeting in two weeks, or a little over two weeks. Anyway, I encourage people to check out the budget, read about what the amendments are, and come and and speak if you have something that you're passionate about, but even if you don't feel like you want to speak, I think learning about the budget is an amazing way to understand what's happening in your city. So I encourage you to to check that out, and if anyone has any questions about how that works, I'm happy to answer those questions. So you can find my email and phone number on the website, so reach out, thank you.
All right, Julia?
Yes, I have a couple of things, so one, I want to, the Latino Consortium for Action is doing a Get Out the Couch and Vote event on live, on Facebook live, a stream live, this survey at six thirty through La Movida, Facebook, the city of Fitchburg is gonna be participating, Fact TV. We are gonna try to, it's gonna be in Spanish, and we are trying to to explain the 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 resident of Madison and Fitchburg, where to vote, how to vote, what do you need to do, when you go to vote, you know. It's about vote education. So I am part of the Latino Consortium for Action, and I want to be part of this this event. So the other thing I want to to mention is that, as you know, we are still working with the inclusive playground in McKee Farm Park. The project, you will see a resolution that is gonna be coming in November to December. But I want to tell you that on Friday, we receive a fifty thousand dollar donation for the park. So that one is great, and so, and we are gonna invite more, it's from a Fitchburg business that I I am not gonna make public yet until, you know, maybe in a month, it's gonna be public, but I want to tell you that we all we all got a pledge, fifty thousand dollars, it's great. So the idea is to start, you know, building this inclusive playground next year, so when COVID is done, and the kids come back to the parks, you know, the inclusive playground is ready, is ready. So so this is good news, thank you for for this donation, and it's good that the Fitchburg company are investing in this and this type of project, so. That's it. Oh, and no, tomorrow, remember, Cow Meet is starting at six o'clock.
All right, thank you. So next up is new business update discussion on the twenty twenty elections, there's a there's an election coming up in a week, Tracy. And I know there's a lot happening, what's, what do you got for us?
Yeah, there's a lot going on, so first of all, I just want to remind everybody that in-person absentee voting at the Community Center ends Friday at five p.m., so try to get in tomorrow, Thursday or Friday, if you don't plan on going to the polls, because that'll be your last opportunity, and then you'll be forced to vote at the polls on Election Day. Also, ballots must be returned on Election Day, they are not extending the deadline for ballots to be returned. That being said, they need to be to your polling location no later than the close of polls, which is eight p.m. Our absentee ballot drop-off box in the front foyer of City Hall will be accepting absentee ballots until seven thirty p.m. on Election Night. After that, if you come after seven thirty, you need to take it to your polling location before eight o'clock in order for your vote to be counted. If you have a blog, a Twitter page, contacts in your districts, you know, reach out to them and just make them aware that any ballots being brought to the City Hall after seven thirty p.m. will be accepted, they'll have to take it to their polling location. And also, if you yourselves would would be able to stop by at seven thirty and help us deliver those ballots to your polling locations, you'd be more than welcome. We'd love to have you help us do that, so appreciate that. So I know everybody's looking for numbers, everybody loves the numbers, so we had two park events. One was at the Hugo James Town Park, and we had thirteen people drop off their absentee ballots. What was nice was some of them weren't even drawing that. Uh, what was nice was some of them weren't even from that district. So that was kind of nice that they stopped over there and dropped their ballots off. We did um McKee Farms Park this last Saturday. We had fourteen people drop off their absentee ballots there. Uh, we got a lot of compliments from people that were happy that we were there for them. So. Um, in-person absentee voted voting started here at the community center on October twentieth. Um, from then to today, we have serviced two thousand and sixty-seven in-person absentee voters. So we've had pretty good turnout. Our first day, we had five hundred and eleven. Um, our second day, we had three hundred and eighty-one. And every day after that, we've had, you know, just over uh two hundred. So between two hundred and fifty and three hundred. So our numbers are doing really good. And we still have three days left of it. So. Uh, big numbers. Um, as of today, we have eighteen thousand four hundred and three registered voters in the city of Fitchburg. Um, District One, we have issued one thousand eight hundred and thirteen absentee ballots with one thousand five hundred and twenty-six returns so far. District Two, we've issued three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one absentee ballots with three thousand four hundred and five returns so far. District Three, we've issued three thousand and twelve absentee ballots with two thousand six hundred and fifty-one returned. And District Four, uh, we've issued three thousand nine hundred and two absentee ballots with three thousand four hundred and fifty-nine returned. So we've issued twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-eight total, uh, and eleven thousand forty-one have been returned. So our numbers are really good. So and we still have three days of in-person absentee voting going. So. Um, any questions?
Could you update us on the uh Little John's polling place? How's that going?
Sure, yes. Um, I spoke with um Adam about uh Little John's, and he let me know that he's having tables and chairs delivered today. Um, I am scheduled to meet with him tomorrow at noon um for key transfer and to test um our Badger Book equipment and some of our other equipment at that location. Um, it doesn't sound like they've had a whole lot of time to do any work inside of the building. Um, so I'm kind of looking forward to see what to see what, you know, needs to be done prior to if we need additional tables. Uh, I know there was a tripping hazard with the carpet, so we'll have to uh look at possibly getting that taped down. And we are um discussing the um, there was talk about a bike rack. I don't know if any of you alders are able to reach out to Sar- Saurus and see if maybe they'd be willing to lend us a bike rack to have it stationed over there on Election Day. Um, I think a lot of people in that area like to bike. I know our chief that works there, he likes to bike to to places a lot. So anybody has any contacts with Saurus, and maybe you could reach out to them and see if they'd be willing to provide a bike rack over there as well. That'd be great. But
I would ask.
I'm scheduled to go there tomorrow, so we'll see how everything works and looking forward to testing out our equipment. So.
Tracy, if you could talk with Mike Zimmerman maybe and ask, have him reach out to Saurus. I think that probably makes the most sense, since he does our business development instead of having
Okay, great.
one or two alders do it. That'd be a good person to reach out to, I think. Thank you. Other questions for Tracy? Oh, Gabriella, go ahead.
I was wondering if you could talk about, if someone wants to register when they're coming to early to in-person absentee vote or on the day of the election, can you ta- talk about what they need to bring?
For us to be registered? Yep. So it's the same process at both either in-person on the day of the election. You'll need to bring proper proof of residency with you, whether that's um your driver's license has your current um address on it, if you have a bank statement with your current address on it, a utility bill, a paycheck stub. Uh, we've seen people come in with fishing licenses before. You can use your vehicle registration, um, any other type of government document um that you could have would qualify as proof of residency as well. Um, you can even provide those documents um electronically. If you could bring it up on your smartphone, we can just view it electronically. And then to vote, you're also gonna need to have your photo ID. It needs to be a state-issued photo ID. It can't be an out-of-state driver's license. Uh, if you don't have a state-issued photo ID, we do accept passports. If you have a student ID, we accept that, and you also need to provide your enrollment form with that as well, and we can view that electronically as well. Um, proof of residency needs to have your name and your full address on it. Photo ID needs to prove who you are, not where you live. So even if your photo ID doesn't have your current address on it, you're just proving who you are, not where you live with your photo ID. A lot of people kind of get confused about that. And then another thing that a lot of people I've noticing are confused about is the in-person absentee voting. Uh, they refer to it as early voting. We don't have early voting in our state. I know other states, they allow fourteen days prior to the election for you to actually feed your ballot into the machine for it to be tabulated. We don't have that in our state. So absentee voting is the same whether you are provided a ballot by the mail or you come in person absentee. The only opportunity you have to actually feed your ballot into the machine is if you go on Election Day to vote.
All right, Tom.
Uh, Tracy, was there a um lease signed at the new polling place or not?
Yes, the the lease was signed last week.
And?
I believe it, I believe it was signed on Thurs- Thursday.
Okay, okay. And the um, the computers or internet, I think you would you haven't checked that out. That's this week? You're still gonna do that?
Yep, I, yep, tomorrow at noon, and I was provided with the Wi-Fi password. So I've got the tools that I need to test everything. It's just a matter of making sure things work properly.
Okay, is is, do you, you may not know the answer to this. Is there any backup situation in reference to that in case there's a problem over there? Or do you know, you may not know that right now.
Uh, yes, our, I have checked with our IT department, and our IT department does have a hotspot that they could provide um at that location if the Wi-Fi does not connect properly.
Okay, okay.
And we do have that on backup.
That's all I have.
All right, uh, Julia and then Gabriella for that.
So the same, uh, in, because with the other polling station that we have is in the hotel. So do we have the same issue in case that the internet in the hotel go down? Do we have that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So um, okay, so no, um, and the other thing I want to um, I want to thank uh, under Dorothy Krause for uh doing a big promotion of the change in the polling station. Um, I know that Joe mentioned to you last week, um, last council meeting, but Dorothy put a lot of time. Um, some of the, and they put their own money to buy and purchase the yard sign um to inform and to install in all the district. And Dorothy, thank you for all the behind-the-scenes work that you did. Um, um, I think that you deserve the recognition because, you know, you did a lot of work and, you know, and I want the public to know that you were instrumental, you and Joe, for this. Um, um, but all the, all the extra, you know, uh, you know, back work that you did, going and sending more uh letters with change of address and, you know, in charge of the banners, the yard sign, um, so talking to people to install the yard sign. And so thank you on the bottom of my heart.
All right, thank you, Gabriella.
Tracy, I was just hoping you could say the the Dane County voter hotline number again for anyone that's listening that would like to.
Oh, I don't have that. I'm sorry. I don't have the paperwork with me. I can grab it more quick, though.
Oh, I think I can find it, too.
You could probably find it faster than me. I think Channel three thousand, I think, posted something on their site about free rides being offered on Election Day. Um, the Dane County Voter Coalition hotline number is six oh eight two eight five two one four one. Um, you'll be instructed to leave your name, phone number, and the municipality in which you live, and they will return your call within twenty-four hours. So if you need to plan for a ride on Election Day, you'll want to call the day ahead. Um, I believe bus services are running for free. I believe uh cab services are providing free rides. Um, and I'm not sure about the Uber or um some of those other uh Lyft or anything like that, but I do know um the cabs are doing it for free as well. So.
All right, uh, Julia and then Dorothy.
Yes, uh, so for Tracy, can you, can you explain the resident, what happened if you received an absentee ballot on November fourth, you know, because, you know, what happened this week with the Supreme Court here?
Yep. So if your ballot is not at your polling location by eight PM on Election Day, it will not be counted. Doesn't matter if it's postmarked on Election Day and we receive it the next day. It will not be counted. It has to physically be at your polling location no later than the polls close on Election Day.
So um, and this is what I want to say. My last thing is before you have an absentee ballot, take it to the Dropbox at City Hall. Don't put it in the, in the mail. Don't do that. It's not gonna arrive.
All right, Dorothy.
Continuing that same theme, if you uh put your absentee ballot in the mail, but you're not sure, check MyVote, and that will let you know whether it's been received or not. If it has not been received by Election Day, people can still go and vote in person. And then if you do get it late, it's just invalidated. Is that correct?
That's correct. If your ballot has not been returned by Election Day, you can still go to the polls and cast your vote. Uh, what that'll do is on the, in the poll book, it'll show up that you've got an absentee ballot issued to you, but it'll say that it's not returned. So then you can vote as just a regular voter, and then that will automatically cancel your absentee ballot in the mail.
Cool. And then we talked about bringing absentee ballot to the polling place on Election Day um or to City Hall Dropbox by seven-thirty. Um, does that absentee ballot get remade if you take it into a polling place? Or do people use the absentee ballot to vote this time?
No, they will use the actual ballot that was voted absentee to cast into the, to the tabulating machine. The only time that a ballot would ever be remade is if there's some error that's done on the ballot, whether it's a um, an overvote or um, for some reason, it's not reading um the way you marked your ballot properly. We did our public test on Saturday, and instead of coloring in the oval like you're supposed to, we circled the name that you're supposed, of the candidate and fed it through. And of course, it's gonna spit the ballot out and reject it. That's not gonna necessarily qual- disqualify your vote. If the election inspectors can determine um who you wanted to vote for, they can remake your ballot properly and then feed it through the machine. So if if our election inspectors can determine voter intent, even by a circled name rather than coloring in the oval, they'll remake it properly and feed it through the machine. So.
Okay, another.
And they are, they are trained in that, so they know what to look for.
Cool. Another question for you. I know um some people have had difficulties in making sure that their envelope is completely filled out. How many of those have you gotten, and uh have you been able to get those corrected?
To be honest, Dorothy, we have hardly had any absentee ballot envelopes come back that have not had the certification properly filled out. When we get those, we try to call the voter right away or email them rather than putting that ballot back in the mail. If we call them and email them, it it's quicker to get a correction made. Um, and one thing that we can do is if we can read this voter's witness's name, we can determine that address through the MyVote website if they are a registered voter and get permission from the actual voter themselves and the witness to enter that um address for them so that they don't have to come in and make those corrections. The only time we would put it back in the mail is if we've tried every, exhausted every avenue to get a hold of somebody via calling or email, or if we don't have contact information from them, then we have to put it back in the mail um for them to make the corrections. And MyVote also tracks that, so it'll say your ballot is being returned if they check that. Or it'll say your ballot is rejected if they track that. So.
That's a darn nice website.
Yeah, it sure is.
Other question is, there's been a lot of press about um uh these paramilitary groups and certain presidents encouraging um poll watchers with guns that might be intending to intimidate um vo- voters. Um, how is the city handling that potential?
Sure. So I've spoke with um Chief Brecklin on that. He is gonna have additional staff on that day of the election. Uh, the chiefs have been trained, and we've gotten correspondence from the Wisconsin Elections Commission on weapons at polling location and election observer contact uh conduct uh at the polls on Election Day. So if someone becomes disruptive, um, and it's a situation where the chief has asked them to cease and they do not, um, you know, we'll, we'll get assistance from our police department.
And will they be helping if there's something happening um a little distance from the polling place?
Correct, yes, yep.
Cool. And then what I wanted to say about myself, and thank you for the, kudos, Julia. Um, the most expensive part of what I did, um, the city sent out plain postcards to all the uh registered addresses in the city with polling change information. Um, I sent postcards with a map of the district with all the early voting and absentee voting and um the voter ID coalition phone number and information and lots of information. I sent that to every address in the district, every apartment address. And then the voter ID coalition worked with us to hand-deliver uh, it was a little over a thousand of those postcards to um single-family houses and duplexes, and it was over seventeen hundred that were mailed to apartment addresses. My goal is nobody in the district will be able to say they didn't know about voting. So I I got, I got lots of skin in this game.
All right, I think we're ready to move on, and uh we'll do a recap in the next meeting. But uh, thank you for all your work, Tracy and your team. Uh, moving on to direct referrals. Uh, it looks like it's the Finance Committee one. Julia, do you wanna do this? You're on mute, though. Julia, you're on mute.
Um, I move approval of resolution R dash one eight uh eight um dash twenty for planted uh plan for twenty twenty.
Second.
All right, seconded. Did Finance approve?
Yeah, we approve. Um, practically is that the city uh had purchased, need to purchase um around two hundred tree for the new two subdivision and for some um terraces. Um, the the park in Feige Field and the other park in Terre Bessa.
All right, looks like we have Scott on the line. Scott, is there anything you wanted to add at all?
Uh, well, just clarification, a hundred and five total trees in the fall.
Oh, hundred, okay.
Thank you, Julia.
All right, any questions at all? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. As approved, uh, like Julia's mentioned, tomorrow is Committee of the Hole. It's six PM, so it's a little earlier than normal. Um, thanks, good job, everyone, making this one a little shorter because it will be a lot longer tomorrow night. And then the next council meeting is in two weeks, and then And then the next council meeting is in two weeks on the November tenth, which will also be a long meeting, so prepare for that. Otherwise, that's all I have for tonight, if someone wants to do a motion to adjourn. Move back to.
Second.
Seconded, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned, see you tomorrow night.